Alright, can I get approval for the agenda? Motion by Umsi. Second by Kathy Allen, favor. Motion carries. Review and approval of the meeting minutes for 11:26 19.
The Urban Council, the White Earth Urban Council here last week. And, uh, yeah, it went really good. It was good feelings. They fed us. It was like, it was, it was super good. And I think we, we did a lot. I think we're, you know, themselves are, you know, coming together as a council and it was good. It was just, it was a really good feeling. And I, I think that's, that's what we need across all of our reservation too, is that we have, we have to work all, work together on combating some of these. If it's homelessness, or opioids, or, you know, any other kind of social disorder out there that, that, that kind of is problematic to our people. You know, when it comes to our drug, drug use and, and, uh... So I, I think that that was one of the, one of the things that, uh, I'll say in my report. You know, otherwise than that, you know, but, you know, talking about budgets and talking about, you know, how we're gonna spend our money and plan our future for our tribe, you know? And this, and this is some of the, the things that I've been kind of adamant about is, you know, how are we gonna plan for our future and project ourselves, you know? In the past, we, we have had strategic, you know, we have strategic planners that work for us and, you know, I think that working with our... And of course, and we do have a lot of new, uh, directors out there, like the Economic Development Director, you know, as, you know... So I think these are some things that we're looking at. Even today on the agenda, we're having some, some people coming in to talk about some, some stuff that, how they can help our tribe too. So I think it's important that, the big part that I always look at is, is visioning, envisioning and, and being innovators. And I think it's important that we, that we do take the right steps and plan how we're gonna use our resources and, and look at... Look at things from, from all sides of it and, and how we're going to, uh, push forward. I think it's important that, that everybody has a voice in this and, you know, a stake in this, that, that we're all together. You know, I, I don't make decisions based upon how I feel or, or how we feel up here. I, I look at everybody. I look at the delegates. I look at all the band members I run across. You know, I've always had an open door policy. I've always asked if you have any questions about pertaining. I talk to the elders a lot, you know, so, I mean, this is important. You know, our, our tribe is very important. And I think that we do have to plan, so, that's it. You know, those are some things that I, I wanted to address today. And, and I think that we have to be more kind of, uh... That, that's what I feel. Me good. Thank you.
Well, me good, Mr. Chairman. I'll deliver the Secretary Treasurer's report here in a moment. Uh, but I do want to thank all the folks that have made it here to the meeting today. And tenants, we do have our White Earth Urban Community Council. I do want to thank you for making the trip up here. I know it's quite the drive. And we do have our White Earth Council of Elders and audience and so... And our representative from the Iron Range and, um, all these folks that are here as well. Um, it's not in this report, but yesterday, um, several of the audits, um, were delivered here at the Shooting Star Casino. Uh, we've had, um, Whipfley, Aide Bailey, Garbala, um, and some other attorneys, uh, come in and present on a number of issues that we've been working on for quite some time. Just as a matter of, uh, managing th- those audits, um, it has been delegated to the tribal attorney, Miss Newcomer, uh, to come up with an executive summary of those reports. Uh, whenever she's ready to issue that summary, um, to the public, um, that'll be whenever she's ready. Um, I do know that there is some, um, sensitive information in there that will be forwarded on to the US Attorney and the Minnesota State Attorney General. Um, and so, uh, we want to give the legal team an opportunity to address these things that were found in the audits. And, um, in due time, an executive summary will be issued. Um, with that being said, I will just, uh, go right into my report. Um, on, and I won't read the whole thing, but I'll just get into some of the highlights here. Under, on page four for financial inquiry for general funds. Uh, we did receive a number of, uh, inquiries this month related to some of the funds that are listed here for general fund. And this one came from a tribal member and they wanted to know where is our money for the gas and cigarette taxes? And, um, at the November 2019 regular meeting and Finance Department reported that these funds are dispersed directly to the band. Upon receipt, the funds are deposited into the general fund where they are utilized to support general fund programs such as elders, homelessness, law enforcement, cultural programming, et cetera. The Minnesota Department of Revenue issues letters to the band related to tribal population data directly related to these funds. In the attached file, the Department of Revenue stated for tribal population data, as you know, some of the payments under our tax agreement are based on the number of enrolled tribal members living on or adjacent to the reservation. For example, refund amounts for sales tax, fuel excise tax, use tax, liquor tax, and cigarette tobacco excise taxes are calculated based on per capita information. To ensure the appropriate amount of payments, we want to ensure we have correct per capita number for your band. Under the agreement, the per capita... The per capita number is number of members living on or adjacent to your reservation. The number we have on file for your band is 10,039. This was last updated on November 14, 2011, and we'd like to update this number annually in October based on information received from each tribal nation. On November 18, 2019, the Finance Department reported that the band received $5.2 million in tax revenue for fiscal year 2019 as of quarter end in September 2019, which is subject to change as the band was still receiving funds. The Finance Department budgeted $5.5 million in tax revenue for fiscal year 2020. The inaudited preliminary numbers are subject to change as the numbers are finalized. And in the following pages, there's the actual copy of the December 4th letter from the Minnesota Department of Revenue. There was a second question related to the general fund and other funds for that matter. Came from, uh, a tribal member, uh, Ms. Pamela Fairbanks. Um, she wanted to know who signed checks from March through May when Chairman Tibbetts had passed away. And, and March 2019, the White Earth Chairman Terrence Tibbetts passed away and Vice Chairman Eugene Tibbetts assumed the duties of the chairman upon his passing. During this period, the vice chairman lost several members of his immediate family, and there were other notable losses in the community that affected the frequency of RBC meetings. With the chairman vacancy and out of profound respect for the former chairman, finance staff worked on removing the former chairman's signature from check stock, provided notification to financial institutions of the changes, and preparing the vice chairman's signature for bank signature authorization, and preparing appropriate legal documentation for RBC authorization in May 2019. Generally, this work was completed in less than 60 days. Another period of chairman turnover occurred in fiscal year 2019 that affected the countersignature of warrants. The election of the current chairman, Michael Fairbanks, was effective in August 2019, but official bank signature authorization didn't occur until a few weeks later due to an ongoing criminal investigation related to check 748137. Current check stock is being continually updated with the chairman's countersignature. Furthermore, the establishment of countersignature of warrants occurs every election cycle or during a vacancy related to the chairman or secretary treasurer until official bank signatory authority is authorized and RBC action occurs. This takes time. To prevent misuse, the RBC makes financial decisions in legal session and by resolution. Moreover, all transactions are still subject to going through their approval process required by the RBC purchasing department and other payroll activities. The Secretary Treasurer's signature is affixed to financial documents electronically through the period in question and at other times as handwritten signatures are rarely executed. This process was established many years prior to facilitate the timeliness of financial transactions. The band processes hundreds of financial, if not thousands, hundreds, if not thousands, of financial transactions each day, and a physical signature for each transaction is not feasible. Accountability is facilitated through established policies and procedures. We do have on the bottom of page nine, a financial inquiry related be, for behavioral health funds from, uh, Ms. Kristy Ralcor, a tribal member. And she stated, "I was just wondering about the $40 million in behavioral health program. Does that include the $17 million that was put into a separate account?" The Behavioral Health Fiduciary Responsibility Reserve Fund summary has been included in this report as it was reported in November 2019. The $17 million was reserved from the $41.2 million Behavioral Health Other Governmental Funds and shall remain in the Behavioral Health Fiduciary Responsibility Reserve Fund until further notice. Below that, there is a summary of what the purposes and the use of that fund is for. There was a, a follow-up question from the same tribal member. "Is it possible to see the bank account statements to actually see the account transaction?" There is no bank account, as there is an internal fund designated for the Behavioral Health Fiduciary Responsibility Reserve Fund. There was questions related to the personnel status, um, that was asked of my office. But, uh, those questions related to status of employment have been referred to Human Resources and the tribal attorney. So, um, if tribal members wish to know the status of someone's employment, they can, they may contact Human Resources or the tribal attorney for, for the clarification. The scope and duty of the Secretary Treasurer is, uh, record keeping and finances. Moving along. There was, um, on page 10 for Section 2 fiscal violations and recommendations. On page 11, um, there was an inquiry, uh, from a tribal member. Fiscal violation inquiry related to HUD application, NAHBG1900077. And this question came from, uh, Ms. Pamela Fairbanks, tribal member. Uh, may have a copy of the audits, and what she's learned relating to is it's related to HUD denying White Earth Housing Authority $5 million. White Earth Housing Authority, otherwise known as WHA, has informed the RBC that the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, reports are publicly available online on the HUD website. A request for the bad, quote, "bad" audits, bad audit reports have been requested from the WHA, from the Housing, and included in this report. An investigation is being requested of Housing for years 2014 through 2019 due to delinquent audits as they relate to HUD app, the HUD application under question and other ongoing issues. Upon further examination, it has been found that the requestor for information, Ms. Fairbanks, was a director of the Housing during the period in question for bad audits. There is specific concern surrounding a procurement officer and a mold remediation grant. A copy of the requested audits have been included in the following pages. Moving along. To page, uh, 53. Other housing issues. On December 19, 2019, uh, Housing received response from HUD related to the application under question for Indian Housing Blockground Competitive Program. According to the letter, Housing was informed that the application did not meet the requirements referenced in the NO, in the NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability. The reason was listed as threshold eligibility requirements that the applicant had delinquent open audit findings pertaining to financial management, accounting, and internal controls during the one-year period immediately preceding the date that the NOFA was published. Based upon recent conversations with the current Housing Director, the RBC was informed that there have been several years of delinquent open and open audit findings since 2014 that have affected current or future projects. In a memo written from Housing to the RBC related to a 2019 Affordable Housing Application, Housing stated that, um, they had applied for funding in the amount of $708,739 from the Affordable Housing Program, AHP. This application was completed by former Housing Director Stephen Howard. The application was denied due to low priority scores. It was discovered that the former Housing Director failed to score points in the promotion of empowerment category, which would have easily increased the score totals for the application. It is unknown why he did not score in this category. As a result of this, a request for the funded difference to the project has been submitted to the RBC for approval in the amount of $708,739. So basically, what, what happened there was they were denied the money for the project and their Housing is requesting the RBC make up the difference. We're talking about several units in the, in District One for, I think, Pine Bend and the Rice Lake area, among other projects. Other issues that have affected HUD applications and tribal housing tenants from 2014 to present. These issues include the former Housing Directors, there was two of them, they were co-directors, failure to execute a mold remediation grant in a timely manner that affected tribal homes in Pine Point and Strawberry Lake. The former Housing Procurement Officer acquisition of furnaces, they're out of compliance with regulations, and the status of their relationship to one of those directors. Um, I do want to point out that, um, it has been determined that, um, that procurement officer in fact has violated, uh, these regulations. So it has been ascertained at this point, um, according to legal opinion and, um, according to the auditors. The former Housing, uh... There's also questions that came up related to, uh, several home evictions that occurred during this period of time that have affected tribal members. And there was a number of employment terminations that, um, that are, uh, being called into question. And then there's also the former director, Mr. Howard, which he was listed as a general contractor on a HUD application, uh, which was, uh, one of the reasons why one of these applications were denied. Other issues as identified in a memo from the RBC internal auditor dated December 17, 2019. The letter is there. I'll read it right quick. Um, this is from our internal auditor. Uh, "The denial of the $5 million HUD grant was due to repeat audit findings, late submissions of required reports, and inaccuracy of required reports. The bad audits you alluded to pertain to the single audits conducted from fiscal year 15 to fiscal year 18. These audits found material weaknesses regarding internal control over financial reporting and material weaknesses over major programs' internal controls. These deficiencies in internal controls led to a qualified audit opinion in fiscal years 16, 17, and 18. Regarding the financial reporting weakness, prior to 15, 2015, Housing had staffed a full-time certified public accountant. When this individual resigned from their position in 2015, there was an internal transfer of an employee to become the accountant manager. This individual did not have the education or financial background to properly complete the annual audits nor the required quarterly reporting. This deficiency led to the following audit finding in every fiscal year since 2015. The authority does not have the internal resources to prepare full disclosure of financial statements in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, otherwise known as GAAP. Under current administration, the Housing Authority has relieved that individual from their position and will be posting for a replacement. They have also collaborated with the White Earth Reservation Business Committee to receive assistance from myself, a certified public accountant who is on staff at White Earth Finance, to help compile the GAAP compliant financial statements in order to refrain from receiving this finding. I will also assist the Housing Authority with completing the proper quarterly reports to submit to HUD. The second finding related to internal controls over major programs is due to the non-compliance by the Housing Authority's personnel to administer their internal policies and procedures. The Housing Authority has the proper policies and procedures in place as required by HUD and the HOSTA regulations. There were lack in the proper personnel to provide oversight and were not sufficiently conducting internal audits on program files. During fiscal year 2019, the Housing Authority has terminated their executive director and hired a replacement. They have also hired an assistant executive director to assist with their oversight duties. In fiscal year 2020, with the aforementioned key personnel changes and additions, we expect the Housing Authority to have a clean audit which will provide an opportunity for more grant funding, signed internal auditor." Moving along to the final section here on page 55, uh, recommendations. Based upon the information presented, it is requested that Whipfley audit these issues by adding them to their current scope of work related to their, to their procurement officer because they are currently working on housing issues. As related to the delayed execution of the mold remediation grant for Pine Point and Strawberry Lake, it is recommended that the auditor identify homes affected by the untimely execution of the grant as tenants may have encountered health complications from mold in their homes. It is also recommended that the RBC retain an attorney to see if an insurance claim can be made to assist individuals affected by mold and that current and our former staff be identified for liability and our tribal official errors or omissions. It is recommended that these issues, that the issues identified above be placed with investigative status with the tribal attorney and the auditors until further notice and be added to the audit. Now, before I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I open it to the RBC if you have any questions.
Hello? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. But, you know, I, I mean, this kind of reflects back on, you know, with, you know, as, as RBC and that, that we look at these, our entities like our college, like our housing authority, you know? And how I look at this is like, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to help as, as much as we can. But I mean, when, when it comes to our, our boards out there, because that's why we have boards, separation of powers. So we could, we, we could stay out of that business, you know? But I think when, when, when things like this happen, how I look at things like this happen is like, it's kind of like, of course, it's negative, of course, it's costing us a lot of money. But I'm like, you know, where, where do we, where, where do we up here? I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of like, I guess I'm just kind of frazzled on this again and just like, I think that, you know, we, we are offering solutions. We are offering assistance, but, I mean, when, when it comes to these boards and it comes to our, our, our entities out there, like the Housing Authority is like, you know, I just feel like, you know, that they're, like they're, but the duty of diligence that we've done is that we need more accountability from our boards too. So I'm not exactly sure, and I know Housing ain't here to, uh, talk about or to, so I'm just like, you know, I'm just kind of trying, trying to, trying to take it in myself the last few days with the audits and the other stuff, is I just feel like we need... I'm not sure if our, if our boards across our, our reservation need more training or more help or, you know, our employees are lacking accounting. You know, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out how, and how we could, you know, better our, better ourselves. You know, that's just something, that's what I'm, I'm high up to say, so... Be good.
I think our boards are doing their job properly. It's just the information that is being handed to the board that they're looking at, that's where the problem is. Not all the information is handed over to the board to review. And I think that is kind of getting to be one of the problems. These directors or whatever they are are keeping someone's information from the board. So, I, I think the boards are doing their job fairly well. It's just, like I said, that they're not getting the information that they should be looking at.
Okay, so the final remark I'll make is that, um, for me, uh, I agree with both of you, the remarks that were said. Um, we are, I just want to clarify, we are providing support to Housing and, and our other boards. We are providing the, the assistance that they need to be successful. And we're gonna continue to do that. But a lot of these issues have been festering for years, okay? And this didn't just happen suddenly. This has been going on for years. And so, um, it's gotten to a point where, you know, RBC needs to step in because ultimately, RBC is responsible for the activity and actions of these boards and these entities that exist under us. And so, by exercising our fiduciary responsibility, we are taking care of the issues. We are addressing the, the things that are happening. And we're doing it in an organized, systemic effort. We're using auditors. We're using attorneys to help clean this up. But, uh, for me, one of the big things that jumps out for me is the mold, right? So, there's homes in Pine Point and all over this reservation for that matter, but there's this mold issue that's happening out there. I know for a fact that this, this, this grant wasn't executed in time or when, when Housing had it. And so, my question is, for me, is, it just really bothers me because I, I get calls every day from families, women and children and grandmas and grandpas saying that they're, they're sick because of this mold. And some people have actually got hospitalized for it. And so, for me, I want to know what can we do? Can we identify those homes under the period of question for that delay of execution, for that failure to execute that mold grant? And figure out who these families are and to see what assistance that we can provide them. Whether if they had to go, if they did get sick and they had to go to the hospital, can we make an insurance claim? I know under our insurance policy, there's such a thing as tribal official errors and omissions. And I know the Housing Authority is a bonded entity. And so, it does, it does, there's policies that exist for this sort of thing. But for me, I want to take care of the families. You know, I want to take care of the tribal members. That's really what it boils down to. We're providing this, we're, again, we're providing these folks the support they need. But we gotta get, we gotta get all the facts first, so...
I live right across the road from tax one. This is kind of how we keep it popular. I watch them being built, I drive it over the road. I come home on Friday afternoon, they had fifteen of those houses, and a tenth of those houses boarded up. The first two, they built pretty well, the one that Bernie Balger lives in and the other one next to him. They built them pretty well. They fly one on the roof, they got it changled, they got it covered up. Then all of a sudden, whoever was contracting that, which I'm going to tell you right now, it was done at the time, much like this RBC runs, a friends and family type bit structure. And when they went in there, they went to chipboard on the roof, and I called rotten pop and some Norbord off my life. And I don't like chipboard, and that's a healthy thing to say for matters made in living off the chipboard side. Not if I'm going to let it get wet. Those houses, when they were built, I come home on Friday afternoon, like I told you, it was six eight, the whole Norbord was all sheeted up, and it started raining about four o'clock on Friday, and it rained until Monday morning. And a young man, John Bucknall, got hired on, he's straight legs, because he was related to somewhere else give his, and he was oversight, I guess, he was chairman at the time. See, I don't live where, I'm going to tell you what happened, I seen it happen. That chipboard was all wet, it rained for three days and three nights. He come Monday morning, started rolling felt over this rotten chipboard, because when old popple, old punch popple, which is what chipboard can do is, it'll, it'll suck that moisture up, and it'll get that thick, three-eighths chipboard will get that thick. And those roofs have never been opened up, and I've seen, replaced. So you got to go back to 99 to 2000. You can talk about a grant or whatever, and the RBC at the time when that grant come, I sat on Housing Board during some of this time, they kicked it off, we didn't, we didn't do the mold remediation. So, there's a lot of facts there that need to be looked at. That just looks like this two year, this four year, you know?
So, what, what I'm, what I'm, I'm not saying that the, the scope of the, the inquiry will be limited, well, I am asking for those specific years right now because it's related to these things, but I think as we, as the auditors and the team goes out there and talks to these folks that have been affected by this, it is very possible that the scope of inquiry could be expanded. And the, the information that you're providing right now would be taken under advisement for that team, it's something that, um, should be added and, and listened to. I, I agree with that, that's, it's all, it's all part of the, the information that is affecting these communities out here. And so ultimately, what, I think we're both in agreement that, uh, we want to help the people, we want to help those folks that are being affected by this, and if, look, if these contractors did a, did a poor job, then we should hold them accountable for it, right? So, um, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to adopt the Secretary Treasurer report as I have recommendations in there.
Motion by Allen, second.
Second by Ray Allen, favor.
Aye.
District representative reports, Ray.
Got it. Not used to these modern technologies. No, but you know, um, we have been working very vigorously on our homeless, uh, we were just down into the city on Saturday night there and had a meeting with our urban council, which went very good. I'm sure you all seen a picture on there, and they had got a, um, resolution forward to get that passed, to give them more power as to how we can work with them and what they can do. Uh, I'm all in favor of that because, uh, by empowering our, our urban committee council, just like we empower our boards up here, in doing so, we empower our own people. To our boards, they empower our people, and to our boards, we empower them. So I really agree with that, and I got to thank, uh, Mr. Ben Rement for all the work he's been doing on this housing here, this homeless housing. We have just had a meeting on Monday also, uh, and I'm glad that our Secretary Treasurer and Chairman have been a part of these meetings. Um, this is what it takes to get stuff moving right along. Uh, our district rep had some very good comments there on Saturday night at the meeting down there, then I was back down for another one on Tuesday, which I didn't have very much time to stick around to, but I did get a chance to listen in on that, um, to, but the urban council themselves are looking for it. But I do want to make it, make it understandable that we are, we are looking into this as our own people. We want to help our own people, um, some of these other tribes have went out on their own and they did this, did that for their homeless, but in turn, they accepted public monies and this and that, and now they can't even run these, uh, homeless shelters on their own. So now they're trying to come in with us, and they never once extended a handout to us to say, hey, would White Earth want to come in and help us with this and that? No, they didn't. So now that we are going on our own, we, we are finding our own funding so that when we open these shelters up, they're going to be run by White Earth, for White Earth people only. Because in the city, we were just talking, we were down there, I've been down there for about four meetings now, and talking with them, for every thousand Native American down there, three hundred of them are, are people down there that are homeless. And this, this is not only, uh, the people who have addictions and stuff like this, this is actually families who are living with other families, um, there are some of them that are living in their cars that are working, you know, they just can't afford the rent down there because the rent is so, so high. So what we're, we're trying to do is get into this transitional homeless housing so that we can look at six-month programs to get them in for the winter and give them our wraparound services, because we got, we've got all the wraparound services that we need, we've got them in the cities, we've got them up here, and I got to say a, a big thank you to Martha and Danny there for also helping out. You know, this is what it takes, it takes teamwork, and we have been very diligently working on this, and hopefully we are going to get a warming area here in Monoman in due time, we are working that. Uh, there are so many red tapes, uh, I didn't realize there were that many that, that it takes to cut through to get our homeless shelters up and running and all this, uh, but slowly we are getting those out of our way, uh, and we are moving right along, and like I said, the teamwork is great, and I say be good to you all for doing that, including now our new urban council who we have just empowered. Uh, who better to listen to than, uh, people who live right in the cities, which is our urban council? I don't live down there, I don't see what really goes on, I don't know what really goes on down there, but by listening to them, we do find out what really, really what's going on. So homelessness is someone that, uh, for instance, I got my son staying with me in my house, they don't look at, they don't look at that as homelessness, but it is homelessness. They look at it as long as he's got a place to stay and under a nice roof, then that's considered a home. But, in all due reality, he is homeless just like a lot of our other people, we've, we have got two and three, three family members staying in four bedroom homes, uh, we have got up to fourteen, fifteen people living in homes, um, so we are diligently working on getting this homeless going. With that, and, uh, within Rice Lake, you know, we are working on our bingo, or we hope to have our bingo up and running pretty quick, uh, there's a lot of people very excited about it coming back. Um, we are getting our people backgrounds and whatnot for getting in there, getting into this, and we hope to be up and running. Uh, they are looking at getting a 501(c) so that they can go through this. So, right now, I, I believe everything's going along, and, you know, and looking back at this other one, about our, uh, all the committees that we got, we entrust in those committees to do their best job they can. But like I said, sometimes these directors and stuff are not doing what their jobs are, and they get into a little squabble, and where does it lead to? It leads right back to us, the council. And then when we start putting our nose into it, they start to say we're micromanaging. No, we're not micromanaging, what we're doing is trying to straighten the things out, do it, we're, do our jobs, which was supposed to be done by the directors and these boards. And I'm not, I'm not saying anything about the boards and the directors, all I'm saying is that, you know, once we all start working together, we all get on the same page, everything begins to work out in a good manner, and that's what we all say. So with that, I'd just like to say happy holidays to all you, and I hope you enjoy your holidays. I know I'm glinting, looking forward to be good.
I'd like to thank all of you guys for coming today, and, um, it's nice to see all you. You know, I know a lot of our, our committees are right now doing Toys for Tots, so a lot aren't here for that reason. Um, I do want to mention homelessness, and that we've been working on it, you know, especially down the cities. There's 35% homelessness here. Going to some of the homes in the project, and they're over sixty years old. I said, how come all the kids are all in the living room and the, that, that's about it, it's bad in the kitchen. They got five kids, you know? All the mold is so bad, and when I went and opened the door, oh, it just hit you, you know? But we have to take care of all our districts, you know? And some of these homes are so old that they really need that attention, they really need, they have to be spread out. So that's, uh, the main thing is, is homelessness. I've been putting up people right and left over here at the casino, trying to get them out, out of their cars, and they're elders, they're elders, you know, and, and shot. How come the, you know, a lot of one bedrooms have two, three families, and I said, how do you manage? Whoever comes first gets a bet, you know, gets this, you know, the couch or whatever, you know? But, uh, so we, we've got a, a terrible problem of homelessness here on the rest, every community. So, thank God, you know, we do, like, like I'm said, you know, you're considered not homeless if you're Ann Raymond. If you have a roof over here, it's, well, maybe some people in the house with one, one bathroom, you know, that does, to me, it's homelessness. And so that's what we've been working on right now, besides everything else that's going on, um, especially with these audits. I, uh, I know that's, that's where we're going with it, we've been working hard for it, and, uh, we're going to stay with it. So I want to thank you for that. You know, I do want to wish you a Merry Christmas. I know all the stuff is going on, but, you know, it's going to be all right, it's going to work out. I want to thank everybody for the work that they've done, you know, all of these, you know? So thank you very much.
Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks for coming to our meeting. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say 2019 has been a hell of a year for our tribal members, a lot of deaths, the year hasn't played over with yet, and I'm asking for a few moments of silence for all those that we lost. Oh, be good. Uh, I'd like to thank Charlie and her team there for hosting us on there Saturday. That was the best fried bread I've eaten in a long time. Uh, you guys did a good job setting that up, appreciate it very much. Uh, the discussion today, I guess, is really the homeless problem, but I'd like everybody to know that we care about our tribal members down in Twin Cities area and the urban area, but we also care about our tribal members at home. We'll be taking care of them first before we move to the Twin Cities area to help. I just want everybody to know that, that this is a big problem across the board here, everybody's getting involved, we have lots of team members, the Behavior Health Crew, Ben and his crew over there, and all them, that good stuff, uh. We've been working on a lot of stuff here lately, the, a lot of the housing issues especially, that's a big problem that we're hearing a lot about. Uh, we've got, uh, several people calling in with complaints over the last few months, and actually, the last three months have been really quiet at housing, I'm surprised, somebody must be doing something right up there. Uh, I'd just like to thank the rest of the council here for all their hard work that they've done throughout, uh, 2019 year, it's in all of our staff, you guys are doing a hell of a good job, keep up the good work, be good.
Thank you, MC.
Thank you, Council. All right, next up on the agenda is the Land Department, Walter Gates, Midori Project.
Try this one.
Yeah, yes, you can comment on this. I mean, we didn't have, we didn't have to approve nothing on me, but we could have discussion on that too, so please feel free to, so.
And I'm not good at probably addressing, but I appreciate you all acknowledging, um, you know, um, I'm a person who's not a person who's 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 a person
And we got family up here that it'll also flow back and forth like that. So we can't really continue to separate. We can't continue to separate our families up here and our families in our urban areas. So how do we find that medium to bring us back together in addressing stuff? So I, I know I understand that, um, when I hear about us getting help down with this homeless situation in, um, Minneapolis, to me, when you build on something up here and asking for that homeless package, I would, uh, it, yeah, it just makes perfect sense that it helps all white earth people, no matter where we're housed at. And the thing is that I, I guess I have, um, some concerns, MC. When you, um, stated that you will be helping the people on the rez first and then you will, then they were secondary. And I would like to know how that decision came about because, um, my understanding was that when we met down there, we were gonna all work together as a whole.
We are, we plan on working together as a whole down, but we need to start, we got a lot of homeless people right here at home. We wanna start here with, you know, and start our program here. We, and we're gonna, we plan on coming down there also, you know? I'm just saying, you know, we, we have a homeless problem right here at home also that, you know, that needs to be addressed too. That's, that's all I'm looking at.
Okay, and I understand that. And so I would like to know also if the, our urban, um, community council, I would like to request that we, we are in communication?
Yes.
In collaboration because I also did, um, attend that, um, governor, um, press conference for the immediate crisis to homelessness. And I did, um, know that they have an advisory council there, but I also got to meet some of the higher-ups because he was asking for people who had money, people who, uh, major corporations, families, to step up and help. And I did have an idea, so I would like to hold a conversation because how can we also bring these people in to have a conversation with our tribal council? And how does that look like and what is that, how does that work?
Well, just have to set up some meetings somehow, you know, so we can get together and collaborate. But we talked about this down in the cities there where we, we hate to take on any other outside entities funding because then that includes every homeless person. And then our people get left to the side, pushed to the side.
Yeah, I understand.
If we use white earth funding, we take care of white earth people here and down there. We start collaborating with these other organizations, start taking in their funding. Next thing you know, we're dealing with all kinds of people, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So I'd like to clarify that, um, Ms. Williams is gonna be actually presenting a joint urban reservation resolution relating to the homelessness issue. And so, um, that balance that you're talking about has been achieved and it's a, it's in resolution. And Martha will be presenting that after this presentation. So I would, I would ask that you, uh, comment on it when that, that would, when she presents that resolution.
I appreciate you. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. I'm Heather Hamlin. I work for the White Earth Land Department. Um, I apologize, I'm kind of in a weird spot just because I have to be here and not too close to the speaker. So if you cannot see, just leave me over. So, uh, so we were asked to give an update on the properties we received from the GNI settlement, uh, the New World International, and the title history and activity of Pennsylvania properties and the current activity from Detroit. So a little bit of history on kind of how we got to new properties and kind of how things pan out for us. Uh, so in November of twenty ten, we received a judgment in tribal court. We were awarded about eighteen point five million dollars. In December of twenty eleven, Becker County awarded the judgment of nineteen million. Uh, the difference in prices or, um, numbers here is because of the interest that was accrued there. So, uh, March of twenty twelve, the order setting bond and appeal, we were about almost twenty-one million dollars at that point. Uh, December of twenty thirteen, we entered into mediation with Mr. Angelo Madur. Uh, he was the gentleman who owned the New World International. Uh, I believe due to his failing health, we entered into a second mediation with his wife Barbara. And then we arrived at our agreement on May twentieth of twenty sixteen. And I apologize, this slide has a lot of information, so. So our settlement agreement, we ended up with a hundred and seventeen acres of surface and mineral rights. The surface acres are subject to a life estate of Mr. Madur. So the meaning of that is basically Mr. Madur has use of the property until his passing. We also retained a two-third interest in oil and gas rates on nineteen other properties that he had owned. Um, and just to clarify that, we own only oil and gas rights on those properties. We do not own surface rights on those properties. We also received four condo units located within Roosevelt Building in Detroit Lakes. And we received four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in cash and that was kind of part of the settlement. Our attorney fees with Mr. Zane Esquire were a one-third, two-thirds split. So he received a one-third interest in the oil and gas rates on all twenty properties. So that would be the nineteen plus, um, mineral rights on the McBride farm. He also received a third value of the Roosevelt building, which was two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. He will receive a third value of the McBride farm at the end of the life estate. He received a third of the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in cash, uh, so it equals out to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then his expenses were about fifteen thousand. So his total attorney disbursement to date is three hundred and sixty-six, seven, twenty-one, sixty. And so kind of what we've been working on is our, um, services towards recovery, uh, just kind of doing the investigations, the backgrounds, uh, the legal research and everything. Um, we have those amounts posted there. We did also receive an appraisal and then required title, uh, title insurance and a title commitment. So that value is about six thousand five thirty-two. And so just a few pictures and some information on the McBride farm. Um, the reason why I call it the McBride farm is it's on McBride Road. It's just easiest for us to identify those properties, so. Uh, currently, property taxes out there are about eleven hundred dollars. And those are being paid currently by Mr. Madur until his passing. So we will not, so we won't take on that cost until his passing, so. Current county tax value is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, property values in that area are a little bit higher due to their lack of, um, just kind of updating their county records and things like that. So we're looking at an estimated value of over three hundred thousand with that property. And then the title search has been completed. There were no found liens or mortgages and then the title insurance has been purchased. Some of our potential uses for the property would be timber production and sales revenue. Uh, we also have agricultural production, rent and crop revenue. Uh, there's opportunities for CRP programs, hunter access programs, and then there's the possibility of the valuable mineral explorations. Um, and of course, if there is an opportunity for a fair market value sale, um, sale or offer or above that market value, so. And then just some off reservation fee to trust things that we can do. Um, some of the pros of our, of our fee to trust, you know, we're not subject to the local taxation. We have that fiduciary trust responsibility of the bureau, um, and then not subject to the state laws and regulations. However, some of the cons here would be it's a lengthy process. You know, our, any potential development that we do have with the property, the CFR would kind of regulate us on that. And then, of course, management from a distance. I mean, with that being a property that's, I mean, not necessarily an overnight drive, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a struggle for us to have to do the management of that, of that property. And then, of course, just costs, recording fees, um, that kind of thing, so. So this is some of the title encumbrances that we came across. I know there's been a lot of conversation around the oil and gas leases when they were developed and kind of when they ended and stuff. Uh, so as you can see, in twenty eleven, these five-year oil and gas leases, those were entered into by the Madures themselves. So that was prior to our consent of the property. Uh, they also entered into a three-year pipeline right-of-way option agreement. And then it was extended another additional four years in twenty fifteen. So our actual ownership came in in twenty sixteen. And so with the timeline of the leases and everything, uh, the termination of the oil and gas leases happened in twenty seventeen, so. And then as far as the expiration of the pipeline right-of-way agreement, um, just kind of lays it all out for everybody so they understand when things happen, um, and then kind of gives you a little better, clear picture of what's, uh, what encumbrances were on the title at the time. A little information on the Roosevelt Building. Uh, currently, we have three tenants within the building, um, and so we are utilizing that. And I apologize for the picture. We actually don't own this taller side of the building. What we own is the shorter side here, so I apologize for not having a little bit better picture on that end of things. And then if we have Wally come up, I'll have Wally explain kind of the legal review and all the things he's been working on, so.
Morning, everybody. It's, it's an honor to work for the white earth people. Uh, I'm an attorney. I live in Mankato. I've been brought in, uh, by Mr. Roy as outside counsel to review and analyze and come up with a course of action to proceed, uh, with the, to close the Midori matter. Just for a background, is, uh, I attended law school in Oklahoma and I worked at a law firm as a law clerk that did a lot of oil and gas work. So I do have some background in that and I also have done a lot of contract litigation. So reading and analysis of the contracts is also in my background. So where you're at today is that you have a settlement agreement that was breached back in two thousand sixteen. And, uh, you've received some, uh, real property located out in Pennsylvania as part of the settlement proceeds. Now, the retainer agreement that was struck between Mr. Bear, the attorney that represented, uh, white earth in the collection or reducing the claim to a judgment, uh, said that the attorney's fees would be one-third of the gross amount of recovery, alright? And, uh, the retainer agreement says that those attorney's fees were secured by what's called a lien against the property, any amounts that are recovered, okay? It is, a lien is not an ownership interest. It's equivalent to a security interest, alright? So when the deed of transfer was drafted to transfer title from Mr. Midori to white earth, the deed did not have a lien in it. It actually gave ownership interest, a one-third ownership interest in the property to Attorney Bear, alright? A lien interest and an ownership interest are as different as night and day, okay? So now Mr. Bear has a one-third ownership interest in that property when the contract says he should only have a lien interest. And then when you go to value that, uh, the attorney's fees, what date do you use? If you're an owner of property, your valuation is the date of any sale. Then you know what it's worth. When you settle things in litigation, you know what the value is at that, at that time that is stated or agreed to between the parties. So in my analysis, Mr. Bear has a lien interest in the property and the value of that lien was fixed as of two thousand sixteen, alright? Unfortunately, the deed does not reflect that. And also, the, the way the deeds were drafted, the names of the parties or the names of the recipient were not exactly correct. And when you deal with real estate, everything has to be absolutely perfect. All the i's have to be dotted, the t's have to be crossed and they, there has to be commas where they belong and everybody's name has to be spelled correctly. That, the deed shows that it's not there. Now, there's another document that I just saw this morning and it was a resolution, uh, from the tribal council relating to Mr. Bear's, uh, attorney's fees. And there's nothing in that agreement that changes it from a lien to an ownership interest. So that still has to be cleaned up. Now, if Mr. Bear agrees with it, it's gonna be very easy to clean up. If he digs his heels in and says, "No, I own one-third of that property," now you gotta fight, okay? And getting, going to the oil and gas leases on there, uh, those were for a fixed term. Those leases were entered into, uh, before, uh, the settlement was reached. So you take that property, what we call subject to the, to those leases. Everything has expired. So they're, uh, they're, they're no longer a burden on the property. That's what the legal terminology is. And, uh, so the land is free and clear except for the life estate that was reserved by Mr. Midori in the property for the surface rights. So surface rights, uh, in general, extend seven feet down. Below that are the mineral rights from there to the center of the earth. Now, when you hear oil and gas leases right away, a lot of, uh, the reaction is, boy, there's some potential wealth there or there's actually wealth going on. Unfortunately, on this real estate, there was no active, what they call mining. No drilling for oil, no drilling for gas and no production. So it's only a potential. And, uh, in order to find out what the resources are that are below the surface, you have to have the, uh, they call them sounding reports. And what they do is they send vibration sound waves into the ground and then they, it bounces back and they read. They have, uh, computer programs that can read the noise and tell what's down there. If it's solid granite or if there are liquids and what are those liquids? Is it, is it liquefied natural gas? Is it, is it oil and how deep and how wide? Well, nobody has ever seen any of those geological reports. So we don't know what's down there. Consequently, we don't know what the value is. The value when you received it was zero for minerals. The value as it sits today is still zero because it's never been proven, it's never been developed. Alright. So, uh, now going back to the, when the judgment was entered into or when the judgment was obtained, shortly before that, if I look at the dates here, we have, the judgment was entered right here. Eighteen million bucks in two thousand eleven, alright? And then after that date, you have the first transfer by Mr. Midori of his property, alright? He's gonna get everything that he has of value out of his name over into friends or family, alright? So what we call that in the law, that's called an insider transaction. If you are transferring assets to family members related by blood or marriage or to close friends that you can trust, that's an insider transaction. And if you do that ever near a time where you have, uh, you have a debt or a potential debt to a third party, then those are called badges of fraud. And you have what's called a fraudulent transfer or fraudulent conveyance. And there's a couple of other badges that I won't get into it because we'd be talking for another hour here and we're not gonna do that. Just wanna give you a background. So when there are badges of fraud, you bring an action to set aside the transfers. Now, what could have happened but didn't happen is after the judgment was granted, which, uh, there's out in Pennsylvania where this real estate was located and then you had also something in Florida where, uh, there was value. What should have happened but didn't happen is called the appointment of a receiver. So the judgment should have been what's called transferred or docketed in Pennsylvania. And then that judgment becomes a lien against all of the property owned by the judgment debtors, which would be the Midurys and also his business, okay? And then a receiver is appointed by the court. That's, uh, somebody that's knowledgeable in management of real estate and finances. And they take control of all of the properties. They collect all the money and they pay all the debts. And then in the process, you can go to the court and go back and say, "Look, a judge." They engage in fraudulent transfers. They knew that they had some exposure on a debt. And the first thing he did is what crooks usually do is they get rid of all their property that has value. And then after they reached the settlement, right here in May of two sixteen, what happens? These properties were then transferred. These properties were then transferred back. That's another badge of fraud, okay? But once the settlement was signed, it's over with. The receivership cannot go forward, and you can't set aside the agreement because both sides were represented by counsel and received the advice of counsel, and it's presumed that they made a knowing and willing involuntary decision to enter into it. So the settlement got you one million dollars on an eighteen million dollar judgment, okay? So whatever money Mr. Madury pulled out of here, it went somewhere. And all of the money that he pulled out of these properties went somewhere. And apparently, he had some personal litigation against a magazine that had written an article about him being a member of the mafia, and he received several million dollars in settlement on that. So the guy had the dough, but he did an end run on you. And the receivership was never pursued. And that didn't mean that something was done bad. It just means that it was incomplete. But because the settlement is, you know, has come and gone and is fully enforceable and can't be set aside, you know, this stuff is... It's water over the dam and downstream. So where you're at today is you have the parcels of real estate out in Pennsylvania, and that's what your value is. Now, the titles have to be cleaned up with corrective deeds. And that's still... Done some... Quite a bit of research on that. And I don't have a final answer for Pennsylvania property. But it's not going to be too much different than Minnesota. But we're going to have to go back and work with possibly Mr. Madury's attorney, okay? Now, I want to jump back now to the surface rights out there. He has the right to mine gravel from the surface for as long as he's drawing a breath, all right? Even if he's incapacitated in a nursing home, he still has his life estate. His life estate will end upon his last breath, his last breath. And then that goes away. And then White Earth owns the surface rights and the mineral rights to that particular parcel where he has his life estate. And then, as Heather pointed out, what is the use of the property between now and then? And when it's sold, do you retain it? Do you lease off the gravel rights to the top? It's whatever will bring the biggest and best return to White Earth on its ownership interest. So my recommendation to Alan is to address the lien interest versus the ownership interest with Attorney Bear and get that cleared up. And so essentially, clean up the remaining wreckage so White Earth can go forward with their property interests in Pennsylvania. Go ahead.
Attorney Bear's left hazards, so Mr. Roy's position, personal ownership versus the California interest, has made a permanent court stance. Right now, it's course of looking for...
Yeah, the question... The question is, what is the stance with Attorney Bear right now? I have not spoken to him as of yet, but that's on the list of things to do. I do have a couple of letters drafted. I've talked to Ms. Newcomer about it and with also the Land Department, and we're trying to make a decision. Does the contact with Mr. Bear come from outside counsel like me, or does it come from in-house counsel, a member of the tribe, the tribal attorney? Do they contact? We haven't decided which way is best to go as of yet. But he will be contacted, and the question will be addressed to him.
But then, you have an idea of pipeline resolution like this, you believe your experience?
Yeah, it's... Well, if he says, "Okay, I don't want to fight," I'll do it. Get the deed signed, get them recorded. I do have... I have drafted a couple sample deeds, but I'm not sure if they satisfy Pennsylvania law. I've got it.
Is his position, how it's going forward right now, or ownership position, or is it more likely that from the original agreement where the position was seemingly in place, which was... What's the precedent right now?
Okay, the question is, relates to what is the value of his lien or ownership interest? That one document I saw this morning says that his owner... That the value will be set at the time it's sold in the future. So that would be equivalent to an ownership interest.
Right, so as we stand right now, he has an ownership position.
That's the way the documents are at this point.
And then is there any other reports where there's... Prior paperwork that signifies that he's...
Yes, you had the retainer agreement that says a lien, but you got a deed that was recorded on Pennsylvania that says ownership interest. That's where the conflict lies.
Right.
Is that... Everybody understand? Yes, sir.
You told me earlier that your fee so far to date has been about a hundred and eight thousand dollars?
No, I've never said that.
Well, somebody could have.
Yeah, that's on the sheet, and no, I'm nowhere near that. It would be really nice if it was, but far less than...
Figure come from...
Far less than...
Go down there, or what?
Where did what?
Where did that hundred and eight thousand dollars figure come from?
Oh, Heather answered that question.
But I guess it's too easy to answer.
Yeah. You're asking a question I can't answer, but Heather can.
Yeah, that was reported from people looking into it from White Earth and from just... That did come from Walter, and that doesn't signify that that came to him as payment. It's just something we were asked to put up there of costs associated with the Madura investigation, and that's all we know about it. Where stuff was spent, I can't answer that.
I'd like to point out that we want to keep track of that cost, the total cost, because at some point, what was... Has been discussed among the team is that we want to keep track of that cost because at some point, it may... We may determine that it may cost us more to try to recover all of this stuff than it is actually worth. And so that's why we're taking a cautious approach to it. So now, you know, there is some studies out there that if the land was developed or something like that, it'd be worth like three million or three and a half million. I think that's what the report had stated or something. And so... But we can't do anything with all that because of the life estate. And the other problem statement is, is that Zenas Bear has one-third ownership, okay? So if we were to sell the land, or we were to develop it, or we were to do anything with it, Zenas would get one-thirds. And as the attorney said, that he shouldn't have one-third ownership. He should have just been... What was the term? It should have been a... Just a lien. It should have just been a lien. So we're balancing that. And so the question becomes is, as those... As he starts to engage with Zenas, we'll be able to figure out what that actually is going to be. If this is something that we just want to just cut our losses with and move on, right? Or do we want to try to recover some money from this and some property from it? Because right now, we got a raw deal. We got a raw deal when Gamemind World International came in. We got a raw deal when the past administration settled for pennies on... Well, less than a million dollars on the twenty-one million dollar judgment. We got a raw deal when Zenas cut himself into one-third ownership. We got a raw deal, and the list goes on, right? So this is something that, to me, if we... If it takes money to recover money, that's a fact. And we're keeping a close track of what those expenses are. And at some point, you know, if we determine that, you know, it's going to cost us more money than actual the property's worth, then that's something that we might just take our losses and move along. But before we get to that point, we need that information, and the membership deserves that information. Now, some folks may say, "You're spending all this money trying to get this money back." Yeah, that's the cost of doing business. That is the cost of doing business. But we won't know what that final picture's going to look like until the attorney finally talks to Zenas and these other folks. Now, there were some comments made yesterday. There are some other legalities surrounding this related to Zenas that may need to be addressed, okay? And I'm not... I can't speak for the lawyer, but some of this stuff is unethical, okay? And there may be grounds to even go to try to get his license for what he's done to our people, all right? And so I'm about holding these guys accountable, but at some point, we have to make that determination. Today was a presentation. We've asked for them to provide these updates. I think the Land Department has done a great job. The attorneys, the team, the administration has done a great job putting this information together. It's very complicated, very complex, but we're moving along to the next step. And so I do want to thank you for everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I just want to say, we don't have the perfect answers up here for the things that are being shown on the slides. We were asked to put together a presentation on documents that we were given to look at for what did we get out of it because we... Part of our job in the Land Department is to collect our assets and to find out what the tribe has in their ownership. This is what we saw. And so this is why it opened the door that it needed further investigation. Some of your questions might be more in a legal field that they need to answer. Where stuff is being expended with costs, those go above our level. And as Alan pointed out, in order to go further with some of the decisions, we've got to know what we had and where we sit with them. Right now, I think the recommendation for us as the Land Department is that the tribe should just hold on to what they have until we figure out the bigger picture. We've got to deal with the clouded title issue on how Zenas is in there as an ownership and not as a lien, and then go forth in the future from there. But right now, there is no value of anything being happening on the property, and it's basically just something that we have in our stock. And so until we figure out more down the road, that we should just hang on to it and just see what happens in the future, and then figure out what happens on the legal side on deciding some of these things that are coming forward.
So Catherine, would you admit, and would this lawyer admit, that at some point this counsel has to cap on this? Because what are you saying? What have I learned about this? You know, and he told me just before the meeting, the only person he could have at this point is Zenas Bear. I would have left it to Zenas Bear because Zenas Bear had agreed to inform the counsel.
But that's what I just stated, that there... At some point, we have to determine what that cap is going to be.
Yeah.
I've said that like four or five times already.
This is what I just said. Set the storm, so he said that.
Yes.
He knows that. You're paying him money to go get his cap.
So Bill, are you saying...
I'm not a lawyer.
Bill, are you saying, just so I have a clear understanding for myself, that you think it's a waste of time to get Zenas...
Not too much.
That... No, that's...
How much money you're going to...
You think it's a waste of money to try to go and get what is owed to us? That's what you're saying?
Is there a forty...
You just said yes.
Back off, Bill, if you don't know.
You just... I just want to... I want to make sure I understand this. You just said that you think it's a waste of money to go and get what's owed to us?
Anytime you tell money, you're...
Okay.
Yes, sir, you're pissed that way.
Okay, so you think it's...
In other words, what you're saying, Bill, you know, in order to make money, you've got to spend money. So in other words, you're telling us to sit here and not do nothing and let it go?
I've worked all my life, and I don't tell you about...
Well, don't tell us... Don't tell me either about White Bear. Honey, we need to find out what's going on.
If I could really quick to say something. In the start of this bill, yeah, there's probably going to have to be a cap of a decision of when you stop. But when we were going through and trying to figure out where all this was at, we had to hire people to help us go through stuff to even figure out what we were facing today. So after we're developing all this information, it now gives a better path forward on which direction that we should go. And if that means tomorrow that no more expenditures are made, live with what you have and walk away? Or do we... Is there something that we could have maybe recouped or something? Then were some of the decisions we were trying to figure out because nobody had an answer. Nobody was at that table. No one was there at the times when the decisions were going forward, and certainly not the people were being informed. So those are a lot of questions that people had, and there were some of the answers that everybody was looking for. So we're trying in our best to give you all an answer of what was happening and what we are facing today. And from where it goes from there, I... We don't have that perfect answer.
You have to be careful, Catherine, when you make a statement. Because you said nobody was there, right? It was saved on that lawsuit.
Well, I'm trying to say is that there's a lot of people through the years...
I know there's a lot of people in that lawsuit, Bill, but I was taken off that lawsuit in 2016 when that new counsel came in. And I will show you them papers. I was taken off of there because I'll tell you this, but had it not been taken off of there, this shit or this stuff would have never happened. I'll guarantee you that. This would have never took place. But they took me off of there for a reason because they didn't want me interfering with their doing. We got a million dollars bill off of an eighteen million dollar settlement, and you're going to sit there and tell me that we shouldn't spend money to find out what's going on? Come on, Bill.
And I guess just to correct myself, Bill, I want to say that there was multiple people at that table through years. So you're right, I should have been more careful. But there's multiple people through years. And so that's what I'm saying is that no one had a clear picture of what was going on or answers along the whole way.
Folks, Catherine, I'm going to say this one day. Somebody throw out a hundred and eight thousand dollar figure, and we go over and fill in this thing. Whether he got it, or Munder got it, or Woody Elba got it, that's probably not even active, really, because Munder costs more than that, and so that's just a field, okay? I told this gentleman, from Zenas Bear or whoever, if he can recover that hundred and eight, we'll be doing damn good. That's my statement. For you, Mr. Roy.
My statement to you is, we're going to do everything possible to get what's owed to us. If you disagree with that, we're going to go ahead and move on with this chair.
Yes, we'll go on. We'll also take a break here because Roman wants to fix the mic. So we'll take a little fifteen-minute break. Thank you, McGwich.